June 22nd, 2021, call work, uh, council work session to order and I'll ask the clerk to please call the room.
Ms. Walden?
Here.
Ms. Shinholster? Mr. Reynolds?
You call me?
Here.
Mr. Mullins?
Here.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum present. So what I'm gonna start off with is the mayor's notes and then we'll move on with the rest of the agenda hopefully. Mr. Jordan will be walked in by that time. So, uh, some notes we had this morning from GMA, some pretty interesting notes, Mr. Griffin, as I'm sure you can share with us about this virus and the one-shot campaign. I would like for us to try to make sure we provide some type video, do something in reference to that one-shot campaign because as we heard this morning that there is yet another virus lurking and so everything that mayors, council personnel, anyone within our city can do to help to try to get the word out for everyone to try to get vaccinated. Ms. Shinholster and I had been thinking about some, some ways we could probably help to get a campaign going. We thought about one way was, you know, it's coming up to election season, we could do an election season campaign kickoff. The other way we thought about is, well, I actually was thinking about it was maybe we could do something in reference to the community and getting the community out to understand the importance, to educate them on the vaccination and why it's so important for us to get it, to make sure that we have that community immunity right now, the herd immunity that if we all start to get vaccinated and as we move about, we can help others to become vaccinated, I mean, to be safe from this vaccine. And as you all know that right now, the vaccine pretty much covers our elderly, most of our middle age, and they do have one that your children can get if they're 12 years of age and above that they can get. So if you all will be thinking about how we can do the one shot for the city of Millersfield to include the vaccination part, to get it out to the community, to educate them as to why they should get it for their own safety and the safety of their family members. So, um, with that being said, as I stated, there is another virus that's on, on the rampage that we're expecting, expecting to see it come closer and closer to us very Also, next Tuesday night, June 20th, 29th, 2021 at 5:30, we'll be having a call work session pending personnel matter. So please adjust your calendars for next Tuesday night for a called work session at 5:30 pending personnel matter. Last week, Ms. Shinholster and I attended and Mr. Griffin, we attended a couple of events. One of them was the sixth district meeting in one of Robbins in which we, we heard a lot of good information and we realized that not every city stopped moving throughout the pandemic, that they, Perry, I want to say it was Perry, Georgia, Forsyth Monroe, and a couple more, was it Albany?
Not in the district six meeting, maybe Perry, oh, you said Perry, maybe Byron?
Byron, Byron, Georgia. Had a lot of different projects that came to full fruition throughout this pandemic. Lot going, it's a lot going on there and we were really surprised to hear the growth that most cities were still being able to move forward with. Eddington has the BP station right in, in the city limits of Eddington, Georgia. They're gonna be knocking down that BP station because they sold the most fuel throughout the pandemic. They will be knocking that particular BP down and they're gonna put a state-of-the-art full trucking stop company there. The 400 acres have already been purchased to do that. So it's a lot going on around our community cities that they're doing to get a lot on the map. I asked Mr. Griffin to share in and he shared in because as y'all know, I'm very inclusive. I had him to stand up and give our presentation of what the city of Millersfield had accomplished. And so we had a couple of things we were able to, to stand out and talk about. Mayor Pro Tem Shinholster and I attended Mayor Phil Best retirement celebration, very well attended, it was really nice. GMA attended as well. So we got a chance to be with our GMA leader Larry Hansen and Vince Williams two days straight last week and it was really, really nice. I think that's all I was supposed to bring up, so at this time, I'm gonna ask, Mr. Griffin, are you ready for your budget discussion?
Uh, yes ma'am, all I'm gonna do is just share with you that I sent out the summary late last week of the things that I had in my notes that we had verbally agreed to do and I listed those in the email that was sent to you all and those are the changes that Ms. Danzy has made in the spreadsheet that you all had in your boxes that you received with your packet, uh, council meeting packet at the end of the week last week. And so I'll be happy to answer any questions about any of those, take any clarification or correction if there was anything that, that I did not remember correctly or did not have correct in my notes and we can make that change, but, and then of course, you know, I'm more than happy to take any questions about anything that's, that's in the budget draft that anybody has any questions about now that we haven't covered in the days that we've been talking about it, so.
Ms. Griffin, on, um, the public works, are they getting three of the seven requested positions?
They are getting, um, they are getting one additional laborer in Stormwater. We're moving a crew leader from cemetery in parks to, um, to Stormwater. We are active, deactivating a supervisor in cemetery and parks and changing that to a crew leader and then the, the facilities maintenance worker. So they will net three, um, new positions, but one of those is actually changing what currently is a supervisor's position under cemetery and parks to a crew leader, which means that would be a reduction of about $4200 in that compensation estimate. And then the crew leader that is being moved from cemetery and parks to Stormwater, that would then mean that that crew leader's compensation would be coming from the Stormwater Enterprise Fund as opposed to the general fund.
Exactly when are we supposed to do our contract with, with Advance where it changed over to this?
The, um, the, the one that we're currently in is, goes through December 31st, 2021, so December 31st this year and-
I saw that in the notes, but exact, I mean, when will we have to vote on it?
Well, um, there, there's an amended term in there that it can automatically be renewed, an additional two, one-year renewals. If we were not going to do that, we would need to notify them of that 90 days prior to December 31st because we have to give them a 90-day notice that we are not going to renew that contract. If we're not gonna renew the contract with them, we, we need to be looking at getting RFPs out in the next 30 days to have other contractors send us the request for proposals so that we can begin to look to see if there's somebody else that we want to, to change to.
The renewal on contracts would be an extension of what we already have, I'm assuming?
That, that is, that is correct. And you know what we have now is the, the price increase is based on CPI.
Right.
So if, if CPI increases in a given year, then that increases that contract by that percentage. So that would be based on the way I read the agreement, if there was any increase in, um, an automatic renewal, it would be simply based on the CPI increase. And that, the CPI increase typically takes effect in January, doesn't it? Shane?
Yes.
The way the agreement reads is it can be renewed for an additional two one-year renewal term. So, um, what that says to me is that it could be renewed for one year and then renewed for a second one-year term. So in other words, if we renew it, we're not renewing it for two years, we're renewing it for one year, but we have the potential to renew it for an additional year after that.
That's the way I read it. That's what I was wondering about.
I would say we would need to get, um, new RFPs out by, I think in the email, I said by no later than August 1st if we thought we were gonna entertain the possibility of not renewing it for at least one of the one-year terms so that we could have somebody in by January 1. Ma'am?
We had a pretty good contract with them.
We, we do have a good contract with them. I know some governments that are envious of our contract.
I think so too, so we probably need to-
One real close to us.
Yes. And as I shared with y'all, they have a new local manager that I guess he's been here maybe, you know, time goes so fast, but I, I think maybe three or four months and he's been extremely responsive and I actually have been in communication even today as a matter of fact with, um, with Steve Edwards. He and the local manager Josh Rowell, Rowell will most likely be at our work session on July 13th, just to take a few minutes to introduce Josh to y'all, maybe share a little bit with you about any changes that Waste Management buying out the Advance contract made, not for our particular contract, but just company-wide. And, uh, but that will be provided the time is available after the public hearing that we have on the broadband ready, cop plan change.
So how soon can we get a price from them? Is there gonna be a price increase or what? You know, because we need to wait till the last minute.
I, I can find out, I mean, you know, we, obviously we won't know about CPI until the CPI is, is put out for 2021, for the year 2021, but I can communicate with Steve tomorrow to, to see if he anticipates a price increase on the, on the one, one-year renewal.
Now, I think everybody basically, I'm just talking in general, everybody pleased, might be pleased with the contract, but you know, if they gonna do a price increase, significant price increase, no, we need time.
Right.
You know, but then the trend is, I think, in most municipalities, is that they buying out the local, all these companies, there were no competition and they will force us to go back into the business, into the government business. So we need time, we have to do that.
Right. Yeah, we definitely need time if we, if we do that. I mean, we need time if we get RFPs from other companies, but like Mr. Mullins said, you know, with companies being bought up, there may not be many other companies to go to.
Yeah.
We may have to look at starting back to do our own. But I can, I can question Mr. Edwards about that tomorrow and communicate to y'all what I find out.
Well, if we go back and doing our own, I'll volunteer to get on the back of the truck.
We can let you play with the-
I just go right on the back of the truck.
Play with the arm, Stevie, he won't let you get on back.
If I hopped out, I probably wouldn't get back up there.
Well, I have one quick question, what, um, I hope this is gonna be quick. What does the contract with, um, the grass cutting or whatever, I'm not sure exactly what that covers with, with Public Works?
It, I would have to pull that contract to see, but it covers, um, it covers the majority of mowings for cemeteries, parks, Greenway, and then, um, some of the larger right-of-ways that our Public Works people do not, um, do not mow. The actual areas and number of times that they mow are, are in the, um, in the contract and I can actually send you the, the sheet from that. I don't have that in front of me right now to tell you for sure, but it's, because that, that particular summary is about four pages. Oh, thank you, Jimmy. I had pulled that out of my book from last week, so, um, hold on just a minute.
Well, I'm just, I'm curious, sometimes I get calls about mowing and I'm not sure who's doing what and, and exactly, you know, who to, who to talk to or to ask questions of.
Well, obviously, um, you, you know, you can either call me or call Mr. Thomas because everything's gonna work through the, the two of us, but for example, the basic ground maintenance that's in the contract is Central City Park, Hughley Park, um, uh, the Greenway, um, right-of-way on North Columbia and Charlton, right-of-way on North Columbia and Heritage. The right-of-ways that are contracted out are right-of-ways basically that we don't have equipment to mow. So for example, if you think about the right-of-way at, um, Columbia and Heritage, that's the area in front of Mayor Massey's office, that, that major bank that's there, and we don't have equipment to be able to mow, um, a bank like that. There's some right-of-way on Pine Valley, some right-of-way on Habersham, on North Liberty. All of, uh, they're doing all of the water tank, um, maintenance areas, um, and then there's some, there's some supplemental that deals with everything from fire ant control to herbicide treatment to plant growth regulator treatment, but if there's an area that has not been mowed that needed to be, if you just obviously contact me, then I can look back at the contract and see if that's something that the contractor is doing or something that we're doing. We're actually, um, the information Mr. Thomas gave me is we, we actually are doing about total, probably about 50 miles of right-of-way ourself and then the rest of it is contracted out based on this, um, on this contract along with Central City Park, Hughley Park, and the Greenway.
I guess the question is, we have a cemetery crew, but we serve all the work out. What did cemetery crew do?
Well, the cemetery crew is, is going to the cemeteries daily to make sure that trash is picked up, to make sure trash cans are emptied, to make sure if, you know, flowers have blown off graves, that those are, that those are picked up. And there are times when the cemetery crew and, and the park crew will have to do something to clean up things in between the contracted mowings, especially at the cemeteries, because the majority of the work at the cemeteries is handwork, weed eating work. And so they, I, I see our crews for parks and cemeteries, at least during the high growth season, being, um, being the secondary, uh, maintenance folks to, um, to those areas. For example, the parks, from, from a contracting standpoint, the parks are mowed 12 times a year. The water tank areas are mowed 12 times a year and then the right-of-ways typically are mowed four times a year that the contractor is doing. Our folks do their right-of-way areas more often, um, but the, the parks and cemetery crew that we have is, is day-to-day operation where the contracting is, is for the 12 times per year.
How many personnel we have in parks and cemetery?
Um, once we make the change to go to one supervisor and slide the crew, one of the crew leaders from there over to Stormwater, um, we will have-
Nine in cemeteries is what I'm looking at.
Yeah. Um, so we'll have one supervisor, two crew leaders, and then three people under each one of those crew leaders, so that would be, that's right, that would be nine once those changes, once those changes are made.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Anybody else? Does anybody else have any questions or concerns with that? Mr. News, we were talking about the cemetery and parks and, uh, crew leader that he moved around to, was that from the supervisor position to a crew leader's position is basically what we were talking about.
I know, I know what, did you talk to the chief and tell him about, you know, we talking about maybe add some more later on in the year?
I, I did, I did. I actually had a meeting with, um, uh, with him that I think it was on Thursday morning of last week and he and I talked about the, um, the budget meeting that we had last week and I told him that, that, you know, we had agreed, y'all had agreed to add two at this point in time and then we could look at some more after the first of the year, so.
Did we, what did we decide on with the fire department? Do we, the request that he had put in for the change of-
He was requesting, um, creating a, a new position of, of First Lieutenant.
Mm-hmm.
And we did not, that, that was not anything that ended up being our discussion. We, we did discuss it a little bit and in the process, I simply said that in my opinion, that was no different than the senior sergeant that he had when he came here that he chose to, to, um, to deactivate. But Chief Collier and I have had some conversations, not as, not lately, but we had, I suggested to him that if he wanted to look at that First Lieutenant, um, slot as, as maybe becoming a captain slot because that is, that is individual that's responsible for Station Two and possibly responsible for Station One when the battalion chief is off. That captain was already a position that we had, um, created and I could simply come to y'all and, and talk to you about the potential for creating additional captains slots for those people to be in as opposed to the First Lieutenant.
Okay, so on, on this, um, list of allocated positions, you have nine lieutenants and those are the ones that he wanted to move to First Lieutenant?
Not, not all nine of them, it was, um, I think it was-
It's your seven of them, I can-
It was seven, that's correct.
Seven, I believe it was right.
And if you remember, we, when, I think it was the first budget that I worked through with y'all, that was when we still had the senior sergeants' positions and those were deactivated and then all of the senior sergeants were moved up to lieutenants at that point in time.
Mm-hmm. So in other words, you're saying basically the captains is just a house on one that's filling in the spot to be responsible?
The captains are not currently doing that. I, I, the, there is, there is a shift lieutenant that's currently moving up to that slot, but their, their, um, recognized title in terms of the, the FTE positions that we have is not the First Lieutenant, it is just simply lieutenant, because we do not have an approved position on the FTE list that you all have approved for First Lieutenant.
So that wouldn't have needed to been approved this time versus you saying you could come back to us, you wouldn't have to approve that now?
If y'all wanted to do the First Lieutenants, you would.
I think we discussed that.
We did discuss that.
We did discuss that.
We did, we did. Sense to make all of them First Lieutenants?
No.
Because, um, I, I mean, that, you, you move them all from senior sergeants to lieutenants and then you're gonna turn around and move them all from lieutenant to First Lieutenant, what's next?
That's fine.
And, you know, with those, that same group, so it just doesn't make sense to continue to do that.
Right. Saying that, so my question was, I was seeing that about the captain's position.
It's only, right now, we only have one captain of support services. So we could, what he was saying was that we could come back and create a captain's position or a couple of captains' positions, but basically to put them in line for being the one in charge for, um, when the battalion chiefs are out on that shift.
So the captain for the support service is the one in charge right now is what you're saying?
No, the captain of support services is actually the fire marshal.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So what are you doing with this? So you have, he's the fire marshal and then you have an assistant fire marshal?
And the other request that Chief Collier had, um-
Was to make the fire marshal be a-
Was to move, she, Captain Braswell up to chief.
Battalion. Mm-hmm. He wanted to move the fire marshal up to a chief?
Yes.
To a battalion. That was in, in part of his request.
His, his personnel requests were creation of six First Lieutenant positions and reclassification of the rank for the fire marshal.
What was the point in the reclassification?
For fire marshal? Um, he, he did not give any documentation, um, so I would just, it would just purely be conjecture on my part, but I suspect he was looking at that role being on the same level as the battalion chiefs, uh, in the reclassification of that.
I, I think that would, that's one of those things that would come with the survey or study.
With the survey study, correct.
Study to determine whether those were one and the same or should be classified.
Exactly. And that was something that we had discussed, with the case study.
I mean, I, you know, not picking at him or anything, but I just don't wanna get into just, you know, just, you know, moving, classifying, re- just, you know, just, you know, moving, classifying, reclassifying, and back and forth.
Well, one of the discussions that y'all have had with me is about, you know, the potential for, for becoming top-heavy, so, so obviously...
And that's what it seems like, that's what we're doing.
It has nothing to do with individual, but everything to do with the position and the org chart.
Right. You put everybody at the top, nobody's gonna be actually working at the bottom or getting rid of those that need to work at the bottom, so.
I think that study would help us a lot with that.
Yes.
Just so you know where the six First Lieutenants came from, obviously, you would have one on each shift at both Station Two and Station One, so there's three shifts, so three at Station Two, three at Station One, that was where the number six came from, just in case you needed clarification on that.
And when are we getting the salary study? Is it?
Ma'am?
Have it, the salary study, when are we planning on getting that?
Uh, we have not, we have not talked about a date with that.
I think it needs to be done sometime between now and January.
Right.
So, we'll know.
And if we contract that out, then obviously, that will be driven by the people that we contract with in terms of the dates that they have. But I totally agree with you, because January would be a real good time to do budget amendment if, if the salary study proved that out.
That's right.
Is that something RDC can do? RC, you wanna read it?
I, I don't know, Mr. Mullins, I'll have to ask that question. I've always thought about Carl Vincent when I think about salary study, but, but regional commission may be...
They do, they do.
If nothing else within our region, they can compare us to...
A lot of times, they, they contract with local governments to do salary studies. They have, they have staff available to do that.
Do not, Jim may also state that they do so.
Right.
Jim may do so.
It just depends on which ones are higher priced. Get the one of them, all I can say, and get it on the, on the books to get done.
I was trying to get a little bit of return on my money for RC. As if we paid RC.
We already pay a membership.
Since we got a membership there, membership ought to have its privileges.
I guarantee you, when you stack up those other prices, the membership will have its privileges.
Absolutely.
And then we go to a meeting, like I said, you know, the county utilizes them.
I know, every, every meeting, we are approving something that, that every grant, every, everything that the county does, they do it for them. They are taking full advantage of their membership.
Well, I will email Ms. Mathis in the morning to get that ball rolling.
Thank you.
And it looks like we're just gonna fight with our projector on my device.
We're getting machineries up, up to speed. Are we, the contract for the trash we in for December 31st this year?
That's what I asked.
And I was telling Hank that we need to probably get a proposed bid on a, on a price way before then in case we have to do something.
Well, do we, I thought I read that we have two...
Have two one-year renewals.
That's what I was asking.
Okay, so, yeah, we do. And we got it. We have two, and, and that price is good for those, yeah.
With the exception of the CPI increase.
Right.
That's the way I understand it too, but I'm gonna confirm that with Mr. Edwards tomorrow.
Right, make sure you do since they've changed the Waste Management, because, you know, I know that there's a lot of different things, and I know they're struggling right now like everybody else with, with employees and with, you know, working through contracts with, with other people, so if we can keep it for two years at that same price, we'll, I, I thought we could live with that.
I think everybody, everybody's satisfied with this.
And if we know that that two years is it, then, then early on in that second year, we can start RFPs to see if we wanna change or get back into it ourselves or...
Yeah, that's true, and maybe by then, we'll be able to have a more consistent financial picture.
Mr. Griffin, I see you got the retitled Accounting Manager position on here. What do we do about the other position that we...
They're actually, and I meant to put this in the email to y'all, and I forgot to, but I realized as I was going through the FTE list, that what had been Ms. Josie's position was actually listed twice on the FTE list. There was an Accounting Manager of Government Funds under the Finance Department, and then there was a, you know, let me make sure I get the right title. There was a, an Accounting Manager of Enterprise Internal Services and Agency Funds Under Water and Sewer Administration. And Ms. Danzy and I talked, and we came to the conclusion that that was the same position. They were just on the FTE list twice. So, there actually is a little bit of gravy in the FTE list that one of, that the position Under Water and Sewer Administration was eliminated. So, if you look at your new FTE list, you'll see that the Accounting Manager of Enterprise Internal Services and Agency Funds Under Water and Sewer for 2021, that number will be zero as opposed to one. So, that actually saves us a little bit of paper money, and I say paper money just because it was, in previous years, it was figured into, figured into the personnel costs for Water and Sewer Administration, but this year, it will not be.
For some reason, I, I don't know why I didn't, didn't look at the numbers on both of them, but I was thinking it was, it was being budgeted half and half.
According to the FTE list that, that I inherited, when I came in, it was one and one, so it was not being split.
Okay.
And then, you know, we, we talked about, not technically part of the budget process, but it became part of our discussion about Ms. Danzy looking at that position and see if there was, needed to be any changes in the job description for that, which, which in my opinion is all the more reason to leave it as the Accounting Manager of Governmental Funds under the Finance Department and pulling it out of Water and Sewer. That way, there'd be no question about who it reported to.
Okay, true of that. And that position is not filled, though, correct?
That is correct. They, they interviewed for that position, and we decided to hold off on it. Those, those people came wanting a lot of money, the majority of them did. Couple, couple of them were not, but there were actually a couple of CPAs that applied for that position, and so, we had some people that came in asking for more money than the Finance Director was making, who would be their supervisors.
Yeah, the questions, about 5:15, 6:12.
We got a...
Who's that, Ms. Wall?
We have a closed session.
We do, that's why I was asking, is there any more questions? It's about 5:15, we have a closed session.
And we do need to have a quick closed session, Mayor, if we can.
All right, if there's no other questions in reference to the budget, then they have a motion for us to go into closed session.
Motion to go in closed session.
Second.
Personnel matter.
And litigation.
And litigation. Second that motion.
Clerk, please call the room.
Ms. Walden?
Yes.
Ms. Schindholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds? Mr. Reynolds?
He's muted.
He's muted.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Proper motion to second that we go into closed session pending legal and personnel, personnel matter, legal litigation. So, at this time, we'll go into closed session. So, at this time, our work session is officially adjourned.